I want to call to order the committee, the whole meeting for November 16th, 2023. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Trustee Hallwack.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Mealopolis.
Trustee Underdunk.
Trustee Ruben.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
President Rowan.
Here. We're not live streaming this meeting tonight, but the video recording will be available on the Village's YouTube channel. The next item on the agenda is an opportunity for people who have something they want to say about a non-agenda item. I'll ask public for public comments on the agenda items when we get there. If you have a comment on a non-agenda item, there's a time limit, three minutes, and we'll notify you when your time is up. Are there any comments on non-agenda items? Apparently not. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Ad-Hoc Design Review Committee Exterior Design Recommendation for the New Clubhouse. And I'll ask Village Manager Corrali and Golf Club Manager Stella Nanos, Architect Dan Nicholas, and Ad-Hoc Design Review Committee Co-Chair Michael Laporte to present. Who's first?
I get to go first. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Rowan. I'm just going to introduce the subject and get out of the way. We do have a comprehensive overview of the process that has taken place over the last several months that's been undertaken by the Ad-Hoc Design Review Committee. As a reminder, you know, this body created that group at the July 20th Village Board Meeting really to oversee the public process of finding and landing on a design language for the building, the new clubhouse at the Glencoe Golf Club. So tonight is going to be an opportunity to walk through that process, an opportunity to ask questions of the staff, of Michael Laporte, who is the co-chair of the Ad-Hoc Design Review Committee. And hopefully, if we can, at the end, get to a place where we can reach consensus that we're moving in the right direction so that we can continue the process and move into design development so that we can begin to build out the budget, full budget for the project, start to solidify things like stormwater management needs and other site plan-related items, and hopefully be back to the Village Board sometime soon with a final design, a final budget, and prepare the project to go out to bid so that hopefully this time next year, we're under roof. And by mid-2025, we have a new building to start to enjoy. So I'm going to, as I said, get out of the way. I'm going to point it to Stella for just a moment, who's going to walk through a couple items, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Phil gave a nice introduction. Before I turn it over to our experts to give us a full detailed report on their recommendation to the Village Board, I did want to thank all of the members of the Ad-Hoc Committee that served. We had seven residents that were chosen, and we had a nice variety of backgrounds. And everyone really participated in very lengthy discussions with a lot of public input, so we were very happy that we had a lot of residents also in attendance that were not on the committee. So as we're going to move into our detailed report, I just want to recognize we have Mike Shalowski from WB Olson, our project manager, is here as well, if there's any questions related to the budget at this point. But we're going to start with Dan Nicholas, who is a principal at FGM Architects. Dan has been working with us hand-in-hand in making this process very simple for the Ad-Hoc Committee, bringing a lot of his expertise to all of the meetings, and helped us form our conclusion, which I think it was a very well-thought-out and detailed process. So I'll turn it over to Dan.
Thank you, Stella. This has really been a fun exercise for us. A lot of times, we don't have the opportunity to work with a designated design committee. But for us, this was enjoyable, and we're really excited about, you know, what the process will follow. It's probably important to note that this is just the earliest stage of design. We still have, you know, a full three months of design left to go. So we're just starting to make steps in, you know, the gradual progression of design, and that starts with the general building character. With that in mind, we had the ability to work with the Ad-Hoc Committee. I'm going to see if I can do this correctly this time. This is a general floor plan right now of the new building. Don't want you to concentrate on this too much because it's still, you know, in flux, just like the elevation designs are. But this is suggested to be slightly to the east of the existing clubhouse. And you can kind of see the existing parking lot down to the south and east as well. What we want to talk about is just the process that we went through, and this is with Michael and his team and all the Ad-Hoc Committee. The Ad-Hoc Committee had perfect attendance, which I thought was great. And there's a number of faces that I see out here that also attended a lot of our meetings. So not only was the Ad-Hoc Committee very active, but a lot of your citizens were very active as well. So, I mean, we started initially, you know, two and a half months ago, where we came to your staff with over 110 different design images. Staff said, "Wow, that's a lot." And it's like, "Well, let's narrow this down a little bit," which is what we'd expect. So we narrowed that down to a little over 50. And then we had a meeting with the Ad-Hoc Committee. The Ad-Hoc Committee, we said, "Okay, this is what the design process is going to look like, and here's the visioning exercise that we're going to go through." So we showed them this 50-plus images, and then we gave them homework and said, "Hey, you go out and find additional images, imagery, that you feel, you know, fits with Glencoe and would be comfortable in Glencoe." So we added those to the visioning exercise, and then came back and did our formal first visioning exercise with the Ad-Hoc Committee and the staff. And it was really kind of fun. We were sitting here, there was probably, I think, 20 different boards, you know, stacked around the chambers here. And we all kind of went through, and we had our moments and talked about the exercise and what we wanted to do. And through that exercise, we were able to narrow it down to, you know, some that said, "Yeah, this feels good, this doesn't feel good." So we whittled it down, and whittled it down, and we whittled it down, and finally came to three different concepts that we were comfortable with. From there, we moved on and said, "Okay, well, let's look at expanding those concepts, and, you know, what could those look like?" Came back again and looked at those at a broader scope, and they decided that, "Hey, this particular vision feels, you know, more like Glencoe for us." And we'll let Michael speak about that in a little bit. But once we got down to a particular vision and particular direction, then we created three alternative designs, elevation designs, I would say, responding to the same floor plan, same program, floor plan program, and allow that to kind of take a life of its own. So, once we did that, then we came back and did the same thing. So we had, you know, three different design concepts out here for the same floor plan, responding to the spirit of the design direction. In this particular case, it was a, what we termed as a contemporary prairie-style design. And that starts to... Oops. I jumped ahead of myself, Michael. You want to come up? Just keep going? Okay. So, Michael and his team were... Michael was the, you know, the coach of all this, and it was a lot of spirited debate. And most of you who were there, some of you were there, could understand that, but it was a fun exercise in itself. So, what we came up with from an inspirational standpoint, these were the first images that the Ad-Hoc Committee suggested felt good for Glencoe. So from these images, what we did is we took that floor plan and said, "Well, what could we turn this into?" And that's when we came back with the three alternative images and said, "Well, here's what we can see how that would translate into a new clubhouse for Glencoe Golf Club." This would be a front image from the east. This would be an image from the kind of the southwest. This would be an image from the southeast, where on the right side, you can see the pro shop. On the backside, literally the backside of the facility, if you can imagine where the facility is located, you know, all the great views out to the west, over the golf course. We really wanted to concentrate all the social spaces and, you know, guest spaces to that side. So that's where you'll see a lot of the glass, the glazing, the fenestration on the west side. See the views literally from the entry that you're looking at here? And this is the west side here that you'd be looking at, straight-on. Looking to create a lot of outdoor spaces. There's almost as much outdoor seating as there is indoor seating. And that's one of the things that we really find, you know, most compelling when we do this. The one thing that we've been talking about in our reports at the tour of the facilities with Stella this afternoon is how the sun impacts these experiences. So we're very sensitive to this west setting sun, and we've taken that into account in some of our budgeting and shade and how we're going to manage that. This would be just a view from the north. So if you can imagine, if any of you have been out there, there's kind of a new croquet court that Frank created on site. This is almost the croquet court would be just off to the left side. And then a view directly from the sun. So that, I mean, is our really abbreviated presentation. Again, we had a lot of fun getting this organized. We've got three months of design left to go, and we're looking forward to continuing.
Thanks, Dan. I want to be mindful of your time, but also say thank you. Thank you for reaching out to the members of the community. Thank you for me reaching out to you specifically, sort of in this capacity. It was a, not easy, but it was also a very fun experience to go through, and I think a very valuable one. I don't want to repeat anything that Dan said. I think he's done a pretty good job of covering that. You've got a lot of information that's in your packet as well. We were tasked with finding a design concept, a direction in which we were supposed to head. I think we did a pretty good job of that. We're here to make that recommendation, as Dan said. I just want to give you a little bit of the flavor about that. You can see where we recommended this. I want to maybe add some color to let you know maybe the strength of that recommendation and how good that we do feel about what we are recommending to you. The committee, made up of seven of us, did come with a lot of different design aesthetic experiences. None of us were architects, none of us were designers, but we all had some opinions, myself included, your fellow trustee Joe as well. And they weren't all the same, but the one overarching thing that I think we all shared that even in all of our discussions was that we wanted to have a building that fit well within the community. That was no easy task because everyone who drives around Glencoe can see that there isn't one style of Glencoe or theme of Glencoe, so it wasn't a matter of just having something that fit in for the style, it was having something fit in in a larger sense. But again, I think we accomplished that. The prairie style, the modern prairie style, however you want to describe that, we, like I said, we aren't architects or designers, so we weren't, we're just running with that particular verbiage. We had different styles, but I think the one thing that we did land on is that we can all enthusiastically recommend the style direction that we did ultimately end up with. I mentioned that all of us came with different perspectives from design angles. The committee also reached out to, and I know this specifically because we discussed it at a fair amount of length, reached out to their other fellow citizens, villagers for input and ideas about what they thought. It included sharing, as Dan said, we had multiple, multiple images that we looked at and viewed those we shared with our friends and neighbors and asked for comments and uninput. So it wasn't just the seven of us either who were coming at it from that perspective. So I won't reiterate what's already in your packet about what the recommendation is, Dan. I think we've done a very good job of that. But I do want to sort of close with something and throw back to something that Phil said very early on in the process, which was, we have right now a somewhat unique and probably once-in-a-generation opportunity to create a brand-new government building here, and we did not take that responsibility lightly. I think we have an amazing opportunity to make a spectacular additional building to the community. I think we've done a fairly good job of pointing you in the direction that I think the community would like to go into. I'll close there. I will begin after me. So, we're done. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to. And John Ruderman and a number of other committee members just came in, so thank you again.
So recognizing that these aren't final designs by miles and miles, can we talk a little bit more about the impact of the sun on the west? I love what you were doing with the windows. It all tracks, but I just want to know a little bit more about how you would decide how you mitigate that. I'm sure you do this all the time.
Sure, yeah. Right now, the budget contemplates the, all the areas adjacent to the bar, private dining, and the main dining area is having at least 10 feet of covered space. So you can imagine there's a 10-foot overhang, at least in the bar area has more like a 24-foot overhang, you know, to it, to create, you know, that setting sun shade, you know, into the main dining spaces. They'll always have that, you know, peak of sunset time where you can't disseminate it, but fortunately, we have a lot of mature trees far west, which will mitigate that lowest setting sun. And then, you know, again, what ends up happening is at this time of year, leaves are falling, you know, sun gets lower, it's more complicated, but we're doing the best we can. In addition to that, we also have some forest preserve requirements and objectives that we're looking for in regards to bird, you know, mitigation, which adds and enhances, you know, some of that sun requirement itself. So it's fun for us to look at, and we're very sensitive to it, and we talked about it today in a couple of our tours. Right. So this would be just the straight-on concept design or elevation designs, kinetic design for the west elevation. You can start to envision the overhang area at the bar, which is where the fireplace is right now shown, but that fireplace will not be there. We're working with the Ad-Hoc Committee about finding a good home for that fireplace. But then you'll see some horizontal components in there, which are anticipated to be extended out for that overhang, or we're looking at... And we'll be doing sun models as we develop the design going forward. Let me just start here, just to kind of show you. So this is kind of the west elevation, pro shop, bar, main dining, and private dining. So this exterior elevation right here is the one that we're most concerned with facing west. This is the bar patio and the dining patio. So when we move forward, looking at this elevation, we can start to see the overhang at the bar. And then the goal here is to take these pins and extend them out so that we'll be creating shade there. And with this design, this design naturally has larger extended overhangs, matching kind of a prairie component. Take it into account that we can use that to our advantage for sun control as well. Does that help? Thank you. The current program for the bar and the outdoor dining spaces has about 2,000 square feet of space. That's all anticipated to be covered. We are working with our budget to make sure that that comes in alignment with our budget, but the majority of the outdoor space is anticipating to be covered, whether that's with a hard roof structure, or an awning, or a pergola. We're looking to create as much shade out there as we can. Outdoor patio space in general, yes. We need to balance that with a budget, yes. I do not have that, John. I'm not sure if... Next question? And then we'll come back. That's correct. And, you know, Michael might be able to add some flavor to this. Yeah, and in each case, this is the same floor plan. And what we were looking to do, as we looked at the different design opportunities, is, you know, in the main social gathering rooms, is create some more high-volume spaces. And this would be what I would classify, and Michael, I'm not sure about yourself, but much more of a traditional style. But as we vetted this with the committee, you know, it became apparent that we wanted to, you know, look for some more of those higher-volume spaces that might not be traditionalized in a context such as this.
Yeah, I think that's right in the, to the extent that the, I think it was acknowledged that the third was a much more classic traditional, and the committee, sort of encountering it, leaned really strongly away from it. The, I mean, in fact, the consensus was much more towards even pushing the, what we called Team A here, which you saw as part of your presentation, which is the recommended scheme with the notes that we have in that memo, was even to push that in a slightly more modern direction and put it in a less single-level, branch presentation where, and they butcher this because I'm not a designer, but "co-chair," I think is the term for the overhang that's coming in. And then there were several comments about in the inspirational photo that we used to then move towards what the recommendation was, there were other elements of that where, although we're dealing with a one-story building, there were high elevations in the dining area, and it was actually pushed towards, could we make it feel a little bit more multi-level that you saw in that inspirational photo? And a lot of fairly strong feeling about having it not be a classic prairie, but instead be a more modern interpretation on looking forward to. So it's kind of anchoring it within prairie roots within Illinois, and also the, there was a fair amount of discussion of Frank Lloyd Wright, but not tying it necessarily to him as the architect within that style. But there was also a look towards, I think that there was a comment at some point of, "How old is the building that we have now?" As an anchor towards, "How long is this building here going to be in the future?" And so that I think there was a little bit of a reluctance to say, "Let's strictly anchor it into a classic prairie style," and instead leaning that up a little bit more to the modernization. I know that the, at least a couple of, I'm not sure who you're referring to in terms of the design people. I know at least one, Tom Flairman, he's there, and he had also had some very strong feelings about the direction he wanted to, but he felt ultimately too, but he was pretty comfortable with how they, what we had designed, or what we had come up with would fit within the community itself. But there was a, there's a fair amount of pushback on more traditional. But there was a, there was a fair amount of pushback on more traditional.
Um, that's, that's, yes, we're here. Uh, maybe a different, oops, right? Right? Yeah, so here, this is, this is anticipated to be the golf simulator. And back here, this is the service yard. Unfortunately, we have a back end of buildings. So that'll be, that'll be the home for our trash and our receiving and our, you know, transformers and things of that nature. So... It'll probably be shifting a little more to your south. But that'll, I mean, that's, that's one of the exciting design things that we get to do in the next phase, is to that arrival experience. And we're always, you know, talking about that arrival experience. And for us, you know, it's not just arrival experience for golfers during the day. But, you know, we're looking to make this a, you know, a facility that's exercised and utilized throughout, you know, all times of the day and all times of the year. So it's, what, what does this look like at night as well in that arrival experience? So not looking at this as being just a golf clubhouse, but making this as a community clubhouse for all to enjoy. Right?
Yeah, I would just add to Dan's point. This, this is probably one of the aspects that's particularly still in the works as we are trying to contemplate what that final floor plan looks like, how the entrance will correspond to that, whether or not a porte chair or something that's just a pedestrian overhang, which is what was depicted here, is possible. So those are going to be things that we start to work through over the next few weeks and months to finalize out.
Yeah, since we've published this design, there's been a couple of weeks of work that have continued to advance. And that, the service area and how this is viewed and looked at, you know, related to the existing maintenance facility that'll stay there, has been a great deal of attention. So it's forefront in our design advancement. And, you know, look forward to sharing it in the next generation.
I think, I think that's worth mentioning too, that there were two other things along with the porte, whatever you call it. And it was on the east and the west side. So as you're, where the carts come out, there was some thoughts that these designs didn't give enough granularity on that. So there was some concern about how the carts come out from, what that walk above it looks like. And then on the far north side, I guess, no, sorry, the north and the south side. And then on the north side, what that looks like with the, you can see up there on the far right. So, so the recommendation that they came, that was presented had some of the other things that were given to Dan and the team to, that were focus areas for the, for the group. Is that fair, Michael?
I think some of those points, and as I can tell about this, are encapsulated in that memo.
Yeah.
I didn't write those down, but there, there were some, this was generally our presentation, but there were some discussion items. And to that point, this was something that area was quite simple that we discussed, what is that? Should it be like that? And if you don't explain that at that point in time too. It was a situation where you have that entire west elevation, but it's going to be looking like a golf course. It's going to be the dining area, and of course, that can't be the place to go. If there is private event space that's supposed to be on the, the north end and also golf course spacing there. And so there was some, some discussion, and we haven't made any decisions or don't make any recommendations about that for us or you. But it didn't seem like the best place to put it. The pro shop, which actually faces Wesley Road, which is in a sense an entrance way, even though it's not the way you enter the building, also didn't seem like an ideal spacing for it. So there was a, and Dan kind of said, well, you got to put it somewhere. The same thing that he told you, we don't want it anywhere, but we also face that same dilemma, if you will.
There was quite a bit of discussion, as I recall, on this elevation, more than I think any of the other elevation discussions. And I think the back-of-house component is the most complex piece of it, because again, it has to go somewhere. Finding the appropriate way to mask it is something that I know we're working on. And I will say, the committee talked a great deal about how the windows are placed. What is this, what is, what is the pedestrian experience going to be walking up to this building? Those vertical windows that you see to the south of the door weren't universally loved. There were a number of comments about how could we do something different so that the elevations match one another a bit more, the west and the east? But also realizing that there are components to the building that are less desirable than others and trying to figure out how best to be able to service the building for garbage collection and deliveries in a way that doesn't negatively impact the main entrance is an important part of this. So that is, that is definitely a piece of the design that is underway. And a few different concepts are being played around with right now.
Now, I would add to that, just the one takeaway that we had from the ad hoc committee staff input is the arrival experience, what it is as you're walking up, driving up, really wants to be very welcoming and inviting. We know all the great scenery is, you know, to the, to the south, to the west, to the north. But we still need to get people to this facility and make sure that they, you know, we're just teasing them with the arrival experience. And what they get here, here's the real, you know, new Glencoe Golf Club. But, you know, it's building that, that arrival experience so that everybody enjoys it and is welcome and looking forward to the advancement of the design.
And I'm Helfelder. And first of all, I think you are stellar. You are creating absolute gem. This is going to be something that I think that, it's going to be a go-to, I know I'm going to go though. It's going to be a go-to place. I think it helps the community in every way imaginable. The one thing that, that, the only detractor for me, and it's only singular in a casual conversation about this, is that the amount of traffic is going to increase. And after we just went through some of the things we went through, which whole fell the road and the traffic and the speed of the traffic. And by the way, again, to all of you, thanks again for the stop signs. I talked to a lot of people in the neighborhood, and there's a general feeling it's making a difference. And thank you for that. We continue to all evaluate it to make the best possible outcome. There was going concern about the fact that people use our street as a cut-through coming from Island Park and looking in the way through the expressway, avoiding the Cook Road. To the extent that which that has been ameliorated, I can't say. But I can tell you that it's gotten better. But when we get back to the point at hand, is that this is going to create more traffic. Even, parties, weddings, God knows what else is going to be there, and just general great food, I'm assuming, being served there and drinking and all kinds of fun things. We will have increased traffic in our neighborhood, because the only way to get there is through our neighborhood. And the one, my big story is, I asked only one thing. I've talked to probably about fifteen different neighbors since that week. And there was, the question was asked repeatedly, is could there be another access there that doesn't require going to the neighborhood? Could there be, as we've talked about in the past, there were other designs back in the day, you know, that maybe is just making it happen. But could there be the entrance coming from Green Bay Road? And avoid, open things up and make it beautiful in that way, instead of driving through our neighborhood to get there? That's a question I leave to you. Big one, sorry, sorry. Hit it, John. Didn't think you could. Yeah.
Hunter Daniels, I'm down on Helfelder Road as well. I'm just really curious about one design aspect, and it may not be in the world control at all. I'm a little curious about how do you model the lighting impact at night? Because this is going to be running with, hopefully, a high volume of people, right? So we're going to run that lighted area on the green itself. I'm just kind of curious, it's kind of a dark, cozy neck of Glencoe. I'm just kind of curious how, what's gone towards the modeling of like lighting, not just beyond the traffic, but maybe like lighting and how that would impact the neighborhood.
We haven't completed a full lighting study, but we are required to comply with the dark sky initiatives. So we'll be doing that. We also want to make sure that we take into account the safety of people who are coming at night. So there's a, a safe level of foot travel that we have from the parking lot as we move to the building. But that'll be a, a, something that we will continue to study moving forward. But certainly the, the dark sky initiative will be achieved. Yeah, we, yeah, it's been, we actually had a lengthy, yeah, we had a lengthy discussion actually with the forest preserve just earlier today. You know, talking about all those objectives and how we can, you know, create a scorecard to achieve, you know, those sustainable objectives. It's a lot of it to do with the building, a lot of it to do with the site. And that's, that's been a forefront of all of our design discussions as we continue and as we're focusing.
Well, just, yeah, I just want to make sure, so really, one of the main purposes for this meeting tonight is to make sure that the board is comfortable with the design direction. I get the sense that there is consensus around that. And if that is the case, then we're going to continue the process into design development. A lot of answers are still going to be, or a lot of questions are still going to be answered during that time. A lot of work still to do. There are certainly, there have been questions about how the new parking lot's going to interact with Wesley Road. What sort of issues might there be with stormwater management? Are there other considerations, concerns, pedestrian access from, along Wesley Road? Those are component parts of things that we're going to be talking about soon. I did get a phone call from Carolyn Winter today, who has been at every ad hoc committee meeting, who also expressed her, her support for the process. But she also has stormwater management concerns. And I just want to point out for, for everybody who's watching, we are focused on that too. We're going to be working on, on all of those pieces and parts. Coming back to the board, again, with more information on budget and final design before we're ready to take this out to bid. So lots of work, Dan and his team are going to be very busy. Stella has been, been very focused on it. We've, our new public works director, Monica Sarna, has been indoctrinated into this project very quickly and is also throwing a lot of support into it, as is John Pape in my office. But lots, lots of work still to happen. But today really was an important touch point to make sure that we're pointed in the right direction. So if that's, if everybody's in agreement with that, then we're good to continue down this path.
Motion to move to close session. Yes?
Listener, Trustee Mealopolis, Trustee Underdon, Trustee Ruben, Trustee Scott.